The one for the living and the one that had moved on to a better place.
Here in El Surino, it's a very patriotic community and many men and women have served in the armed forces from this community. And so each year, we honor our veterans and those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice by having these ceremonies.
The El Surino Veterans Monument is located in the heart of the El Surino community on Van Horn Avenue and Huntington Drive. The monument had its opening last February. I'm Rasha Goell for L.A. This Week.
L.A. City College also paid tribute to the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice with its own red, white, and blue celebration. Anna Marcos takes us there.
They're not DOD, they don't count.
And it was off to the races for these veterans at L.A. City College. Wheelbarrow races, tire races, centipede push-ups. It was all part of the fun at LACC on Memorial Day. The campus on Vermont Avenue has the largest number of military vets of any city college in the system.
Our numbers show that our veterans at LACC are successful, right?
But it wasn't all fun and games, as some remembered our war heroes on this day. Some are no longer with us. Some have come back to find themselves jobless and homeless. Mayor Eric Garcetti has launched the 10,000-strong campaign to connect vets to jobs and has so far connected 76,000. He has also moved to house all homeless veterans, and in less than two years, has put 6,000 in housing.
They fought to give us the right to vote, so we need to vote. They fought for the right for us to be able to have free speech, so we have to respect all people's free speech. They fought for us to be able to practice our religion and love whomever we want. They fought for us to have the American way of life.
LACC even has a memorial wall where you can remember your own fallen war hero with one of these flag cards.
And we're going to be there for as long as it takes to make sure that every veteran on this campus has everything that they need to ensure their success.
Three war veteran students received awards of recognition, including Irene Orell, who studies in psychology and Chicano studies have given him a philosophical frame of mind.
You know, one bean and a lima bean, a pinto bean, they're all beans. So we're all beans and we just have to...
No matter what color.
No matter what color. Some are green, some are black, some are white, some have little dots and everything else. Some are pinto and, oh, boys, they're all different beans. But we're all beans and we all struggle, we're all in the same pot.
And now, college and city leaders want to make sure our returning vets are part of that pot. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The event also featured booths and tables offering vets counseling, housing, and other services. While Mother Nature is getting a little help in South L.A., as city leaders and the community mark the opening of the Broadway Neighborhood Stormwater Greenway Project. Anna Marcos has more on how it impacts L.A.'s water. Anna?
Yana, this may look like an average parking lot near the Paradise Baptist Church in South L.A., but it's actually a brand-new water recapturing project that will take 417,000 gallons of stormwater runoff and put them back into L.A.'s groundwater.
A huge welcome party for the Broadway Neighborhood Stormwater Greenway Project, which will both beautify the neighborhood and make it cleaner and greener.
Projects like this are great because we need to continuously, continuously implement ways to conserve water and to keep our environment clean.
In the last year, crews dug up the parking lot to put in a giant filtration tank underneath to capture the water. They also built bio swales that will recapture even more water, as well as other improvements.
The other thing is, we installed what we call eight dry wells. What that means is, we went 50 feet down in the ground, and so when the water is flowing on the street, it comes in here, it goes 50 feet down, another place where we can capture groundwater.
Working with 19 local residents, we've been able to help them redo their landscaping so that it becomes more drought tolerant, uses less water, but also includes beautiful native plants that are attracting bees and butterflies.
First of all, based on the drought we've had for the past few years, and so it's a win-win situation.
It's a tool-belt approach to the drought. You know, we've got to do our part to conserve water, but we also got to look where there's opportunities to replenish the water table.
The council office picked up on it, provided the leadership. Others came in to water the seed. It germinated. It's grown. It will start yielding fruit.
This project will provide enough water for 80 L.A. homes. And just think about it, there's about a million homes in L.A. If we do enough of these projects, we will lessen our need for imported water. Yana?
Anna, thanks. City leaders have also installed new trash cans in the area and are building more green alleys with new lighting and stormwater filtration systems. Well, more than ever, L.A.'s the place to be. Jobs and prosperity are returning to the city, but there's still work to be done. Rich Samuels has more.
For some young people, like Artie Cassis, their film industry dreams are already beginning to come true.
You're at the Jim Henson Company?
I'm at the Jim Henson Company.
What are you doing? Tell people what you're doing there.
I'm a set P.A. at the Jim Henson Company.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, it's freaking awesome there.
Artie may be on his way to a career in the entertainment industry, but he's one of the lucky ones. For many young people in L.A., landing an entry-level job in L.A.'s signature industry can be tough. Mayor Eric Garcetti wants to change that.
We cannot average out our prosperity. We can't just take the unemployment rate and say, "We're doing great."
The mayor brought together entertainment industry leaders at Getty House recently to push one of his top priorities: getting jobs for the city's youth. With the help of job fairs like this one, 12,000 jobs were created for youth last year, but only a handful came from the entertainment industry.
What we could easily be faced with is a generation of young folks coming in to a business that they might not succeed in.
Mayor Garcetti pointed out that developing more creative career pathways won't just create more jobs for youth, it will build a better and stronger entertainment industry.
But our ability to continue shaping and inspiring imaginations depends on us making sure that the stories that are told and those who are telling the stories look like this city does today.
Industry leaders welcomed the mayor's efforts.
It bridges the gap between the aspiration and the execution of those type of plans.
From the Getty House, the mayor's residents, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
The jobs discussion was part of Engage L.A., an ongoing series exploring challenges facing L.A. and fostering public-private partnerships to address them. While the L.A. Conservation Corps celebrated 30 years of providing jobs and second chances to disconnected youth, Gil Reyes reports on the group's daily duties from downtown.
The young people at the L.A. Conservation Corps plant trees, clean streets, and remove graffiti. They're also oftentimes former troubled youth, like Lucy Gutierrez. She says the Corps changed her life.
Once I earned my GED at the Corps, I was hired as junior staff. After 10 years, I had worked my way up and earned a bachelor's degree in human services.
Gutierrez thanks a teacher at the Corps named Larry, who pushed her to succeed. It's one of several stories of redemption heard at the L.A. Conservation Corps' 30th anniversary luncheon in downtown.
Hard work and discipline, showing up on time, being in your uniform, taking on the task, getting your education, is what this is all about.
Founder and former Commerce Secretary Mickey Cantor receives the Corps' Lifetime Achievement Award. So does former Attorney General and former Conservation Corps President John Vander Kamp. Mayor Eric Garcetti says he will prioritize Corps members and other former troubled youth to help fill 5,000 civil service jobs, a second chance at responsibility through environmental careers.
This becomes not a city that's overwhelming, where we talk about dropping out of school or committing a crime or being unemployed. It suddenly is something that I'm responsible for, that I have a place in.
Gutierrez now works as a Corps case manager, helping today's young people succeed.
I see myself in every single one of them, which is why I work so hard to try to just make it a little bit easier for them. They deserve to have someone believe in them, like Larry believed in me.
At the Conservation Corps' 30th Anniversary Gala at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Young people ages 14 to 24 can apply to the L.A. Conservation Corps. Find out more at lacor.org. Well, city officials need your help in tracking down a suspect who allegedly killed a small dog. Mayor Eric Garcetti launches a competition to address some of the city's challenges, and a major recreation spot is now open for the season. All these stories in City Beat. L.A. City Councilman Paul Corretts joined representatives from animal rights groups to announce a $22,500 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of a man who allegedly killed a Yorkshire terrier in Royal Heights last month. Witnesses say the suspect punched the dog several times and threw it on the sidewalk. The suspect is described as white, about 6'2" and 280 pounds, with balding gray hair, between 50 and 60 years old. Witnesses also got this picture of the man's van, a late-model silver Dodge Caravan with an off-color bumper.
To be a person that could and would do something this barbaric has an anger management and cruelty problem that makes him a potential danger, not just to animals, but to humans as well.
If you have any information, call the LAPD at 213-486-0450. Mayor Eric Garcetti is challenging residents to help him find creative solutions to L.A.'s most pressing challenges. Garcetti announced his inaugural Mayor's Cup competition, which will solicit proposals from student entrepreneurs and local academics to address issues ranging from beautifying vacant and blighted spaces to building affordable housing. College students, faculty members, and staff from Los Angeles colleges and universities are encouraged to enter the competition. Finalists will pitch their ideas to a panel of business and government leaders, including Garcetti. The grand prize winner will receive $25,000 and the opportunity to work with City Hall for eight weeks to bring their idea to life.
So whether you have that great plan to help us build more affordable housing or a brilliant strategy to increase employment opportunities for low-income Angelenos, we want to put your ideas to work.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell kicked off the start of the Los Angeles River Recreation Zone and launched the first group of kayakers onto the historic waterway. The United States Army Corps of Engineers is permitting two recreation zones, one in the Glendale-Narrows section of the Elysian Valley and the other in the Sepulveda Basin. O'Farrell collaborated with the Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation to support this year's recreation zone and will contribute $50,000 to fund the program this season while creating a permanent budget for future seasons. While Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke to college students about targets met so far in his sustainability plan, Gil Reyes has more from UCLA. Gil?
Yes, Yana. Here at the Deneve Auditorium in the UCLA campus, Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti touched on a number of topics, including the environment, his sustainability goals, and also what he fears about the future.
You want to see results also in the short term, as well as the medium and long term.
One year into Mayor Eric Garcetti's sustainability plan, and one of the main goals is already on the verge of being met. The plan was a 20% reduction in L.A. city water use by next year. We are now 1% shy of that goal, but the waters off the coast are on his mind, too.
I don't know what's going to happen to life in the oceans, for instance. I mean, will we, will our children be able to see fish in the ocean, you know, beyond a few species?
The mayor, speaking about his plan at the Sustainable Cities Conference at UCLA. Targets met so far include reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions. They are down 20% from 1990 levels and surpassing a goal of more than 1,000 electric vehicle charging stations. But other work is needed, like replacement of aging water pipes, like the one that burst here at UCLA two years ago, flooding parts of the campus and damaging vehicles. One of the works in progress in the mayor's sustainability plan. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
For more than 20 years, local kids have scoured our beaches, picking up trash, and this year was no different, as the 23rd Annual Kids Ocean Day kicked off with a massive beach cleanup at Dockweiler State Beach. Anna Marcos has more.
Children at this Kids Ocean Day beach cleanup in Playa del Rey have laid down a little wrap on the environment with a spoken-word performance.
And a big, giant fish with large teeth and the skin of gray. But here comes the trash, which makes the food chain crash. There are lives at stake. This is just too much to take.
We came here to pick up the trash and have the environment.
Yeah, like she said, we're here to pick up all the trash, so it won't go in the ocean and it won't hurt to see animals.
Look at this. Here in L.A., about 4,000 kids from schools all over the city are taking part in cleaning up the beach. In the state of California, about 8,000 kids will take part in the same event.
We're picking up stuff like tar, bottle lids, and caps, because a lot of people leave them here and then a lot of animals get harmed.
When seagulls pick up something, they get choked.
Kids Ocean Day was created to empower kids to be the change that helps the planet.
The ocean is sick and dying. It's not a laughing matter. The overfishing is destroying the coral reefs. The plastic and litter from the streets is in the ocean and choking us. Fish are eating the plastic in the ocean. We are eating the fish.
If we don't help now, then like the beach won't be here later.
We're here to clean up trash so that animals don't get sick.
Children are our future, and they actually change the behaviors of parents.
And just like that, with a little digging and trash picking, these youngsters have just become environmental activists, out to help make Mother Earth a little healthier and a little cleaner. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
After the event, the kids took part in a giant aerial art performance where they shaped their bodies to form giant bubbles, fish, and dolphins. While it was a Cinderella story come true for one special young lady from South L.A. as she embarked on an evening fit for a princess. 17-year-old Jefferson High School student Tykeese Jamerson is getting the royal treatment. A team of makeup and hair professionals is helping her get ready for her big night at prom.
It makes me feel special.
Living in the underserved community of South L.A., Tykeese has faced her share of challenges, including moving from place to place. The first lady of Council District 9, Del Richardson Price, the wife of L.A. Councilmember Curran Price, wanted to treat a deserving student to a night of glamour, and Tykeese was chosen.
It makes me highly grateful for it, because the community where I'm from, there's not a lot of people who can afford to do this kind of stuff. And so to have someone bless me with it, it's like very great.
Del Richardson Price gathered a glam squad that included celebrity fashion designer Angela Dean and celebrity makeup and hairstylist Anthony Walker, known as Sir Tony, to turn Tykeese's Cinderella fairy tale into a prom reality. Her dress was specially designed for the occasion.
I went and made a selection of this beautiful lace and this fancy bottom of jersey that coordinates with this whole thing. And we gave her a little dance at the bottom, so when she's dancing, she'll have a great time. And then the back was our special feature, because this is all, you know, sheer in the back and goes to her waist. She's very tiny and beautiful, but we are just so excited about how it came out and how she will look.
This is my opportunity to make sure that she feels just as wonderful and beautiful as some of the celebrity clients that I've worked with. I think everyone should experience this, and because she's a grade-A student, this makes it even better.
Despite some of the obstacles she's faced this year, Tykeese plans to attend college and study psychology. The young lady is the co-founder of Sisters Pride at Jefferson High School, a club dedicated to building the self-esteem of young women on campus. As for the end result of her transformation, the beauty in blue was no doubt the bell of the ball. City Councilmember Curran Price continues to launch initiatives to help transform and improve the quality of life for all residents in the new ninth. Well, take the whole family out for a bike ride along the L.A. River, celebrate the art of dance with a dance-along, and getting spooked is only half the fun. All this in this week's Things to Do. On Sunday, you're going to want to dig that bike out of the garage and take a scenic ride along the Los Angeles River. Benefiting the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, the Los Angeles River Ride is a sport event where riders can choose to bike distances ranging from 15 miles to 100 miles, and there's also a route for kids. The L.A. River Ride takes place Sunday, June 12, at the Autry National Center, located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way in Griffith Park. For more information, go to la-bike.org. Titled "The Past, Present, and Future of Hip-Hop," the Dance Camera West Dance Media Festival is hosting many events throughout the week, one being at the Museum of Contemporary Art in downtown Los Angeles. The festival includes showcases, film screenings, and dance-alongs. Dance Camera West is celebrating the art form of dance and invites you to come experience its annual festival on Saturday, June 11 at 1:00 P.M. For more, visit danccamerawest.org. If you're looking to get spooked this weekend, you may or may not, depending on your liking for all things horror, want to attend the Great Horror Campout at Elysian Park. This unique event is an interactive one that features a 12-hour campout, including movies, games, ghost stories, and some creepy arts and crafts. Attendees can choose how much horror they would like to experience, and the Great Horror Campout likes to note that no one will actually be in danger, thank goodness. It all takes place on Saturday, June 11, at Elysian Park, located at 835 Academy Road. The movie starts at 7:00 P.M. For more, visit greathorrorcampout.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
A single ember that escapes from a wildfire can travel more than a mile. Get Fire Adapted now. Learn simple steps at fireadapted.org.
It all started that one day. I knew then my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
...
Good morning, everyone. We're going to start our council meeting. Today is June 7th and welcome to the LA City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenfield Bonin, Biscayne, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harastasen, Weezer, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Englander moves. Mr. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves and Mr. Bob Blumenfield seconds.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. O'Farrell, can you please see this in the flag salute, sir?
If we could all rise, place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Members, if you could please direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda, please.
Madam President, there's a request to continue Item 2 to Wednesday, June 8th.
Without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 5 are items for notice for public hearing and the Department of Building and Safety recommends on Item 1E and N that those items be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full and 1D and G be received and filed due to ownership changes on the properties.
Without objection, that will be the order.
And we have cards, yes, on Items 1 and 3.
Okay, so let's, um, let's move on to the next one.
Madam President, would you like to vote on Items 4 and 5?
Yes. Let's open the, uh, let's, let's close the public hearing and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next items.
And for the record, those ordinances for 4 and 5 will be held over for one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
All right, thank you.
And Madam President, that takes us to Items 6 through 16 and those are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials? Those items? Seeing on. Let's hold 16 on the desk.
16 is held on the desk.
All right, thank you. On the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And the ordinance for Item 6 will be held over also for one week unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Great. What's next?
Items 17 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us, members.
And there are cards on both items, 17 and 18. Would you like to hold Items 17 and 18 on the desk?
Yes, ma'am. So what's, what's next?
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment. Item 3 called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Item 3, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns comments relative to the application for determination of convenience or necessity for the sale of alcoholic beverages. Every time somebody in your family is run over, hit and run, it's because they granted an extra license for convenience or necessity. There is no necessity for alcohol. You can walk 50 and remember, it's not in the Jewish neighborhoods.
Madam President, he should direct his comments to the council.
It's not in, see, they don't want me talking to black people. Oh, they hate me talking to black people. It's not in the black, it's all in the black and the Hispanic neighborhoods. Go in the Jewish neighborhoods, almost no bars. They, and they, and they come over here and they run you over. This is the hit and run capital of the world. And they get away with it. And what do we do? We need more alcohol licenses. Alcohol is poison. We have enough licenses. Why do we need a, a license in, uh, in this neighborhood? South Broadway, in Hispanic, black neighborhood. You're not going to find it anywhere near, uh, next to, west of La Brea. That's where Jews live. And don't you ever forget, we Jews consider ourselves racially superior to blacks and Hispanics. And that's how, and this is 15 people up here and it's an all-white jury. It's an all-white jury. And I'm telling you right now, once you give this license, like, there's no cap on licenses. There's many goddamn licenses as the Jews want. And you'll never get up and see a rabbi have to get up.
Madam Clerk, that's, um, the only card we have for this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item passes, move on to Item 17.
Item 17 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, Item 17.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org or at J. Walsh Confidential. Now, when you do a good job, I'm not wearing these way, I'm not wearing, you do an excellent job on rent. I, I moved here when Mayor Sam was here and I've never had trouble with rent. And this is about REAP, this rent escrow account. If you don't, if your property is not up to code, and we have to thank Bradley and, uh, for this, then the landlord doesn't pay the rent. You don't pay the rent to the landlord. You pay the rent to the city until these landlords fix things up. Again, when you do a good job, I say thank to all 15 of you. You do a good job. But when you kill blacks and Hispanics out of racism, I tell you to go fuck yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Don't, don't go anywhere because you're up next for the next item. Madam Clerk, that's all the cards for Item 17. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's move on to Item 18. Mr. Walsh?
I have the right to speak because of law in Sacramento, not because of these cocksuckers. Number 18. Okay, this is an offer for reward apprehension and conviction with act of vandalism. Uh, now we're awarding, it doesn't, $10,000 for vandalism. I'm telling you right now that anybody can go out and murder a black child in this city and not even have a reward posted or an Hispanic child. But fuck with anybody, white man's property, $10,000. We have another one for 10, what, $20,000 for a dog. I just want you to know that Price and the rest of them consider a dog more than they do somebody who's black or Hispanic. They're all 100% plantation dancers. HollywoodHighlands.org.
That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's open Items 4, 5 and 6 for reconsideration. Let's vote on, Miss, Madam Clerk, let's vote on reconsideration on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Members, these items are now before us, 4, 5 and 6. There are no cards on this item, on these items, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to Item 1.
Item 1 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, Item 1. Followed by Patrick Flannery.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This, I'm sorry to say this, but this again is where you're doing a good job at building and safety compared to other cities like Glendale, Pasadena protest. This concerns nuisance abatement. They don't do as good a job east of La Brea as they do in their own neighborhoods west of La Brea. But they do do a pretty good job of cleaning up things, 8,000, lien is a fine, $8,000, $7,000. You see, there's a whole bunch of them. One of them is for 6, uh, $613. Uh, this, everybody knows, keep up your property in LA. If you want to do, if, if you're interested in getting a liquor license, just pay off these scumbags up here. Put money in their office account and they'll dance like Bojangles, Mr. Price. You dance like Bojangles.
Next speaker, Patrick Flannery, are you here? Followed by Donna Pierman, followed by Doc Rivers.
And as the speakers make their way forward, Madam President, there is a request to continue 1-0 until July 26th.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that item. Go ahead, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. Um, Patrick Flannery here. Um, I received, um, notice that I have a very large bill due for arrears and, uh, some, some items that I wasn't aware of ever existed. I have, uh, rental property that I had rented out to tenants.
Sir, I don't mean to cut you off, just hold first time for just a second. Can you tell me what item you're referring to and the address, please?
Well, the address is 1814- Well, the address is 18141 Rain Street, Northridge. And, uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is a, a multi-tenant, um, property. Uh, I've been paying taxes on it as a multi-tenant property and not as a single-family dwelling. And, uh, I've also been paying the Housing Department as a multi-tenant, um, property also. But, um, the items that were cited, and this was a park trailer and a pool that were not maintained. And, uh, the trailer belonged to the tenants, and also the, uh, pool responsibilities were also belonging to, uh, the responsibilities belonged to the tenants also. So, um, those people are long gone, and, uh, for me to, um, get in touch with those people and collect any money from them is probably, um, something that's never going to happen. So what I'm asking for here is a, is a break on the total amount and to try and clear it up.
Sir, I've just been notified your item has been continued for 30 days, and that's until July 1st. If you can please step to the side, we're going to have someone from the department to speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Donna. Followed by Doc Rivers. I don't want Donna.
Okay, yeah, again, these liens are getting out of hand. Most I met on these liens did not realize they had one until ballooned the amount they couldn't afford. Most people work and they can't take off to fight it or didn't even know they can. How many in the valley could come for video conferencing? Let's allow them to speak in Van Nuys, maybe only take a little time off instead of a whole day off from work. But first two liens are, uh, uh, very out of hand. First one's over $8,000, second one over $7,000. We really need to work out a thing so these people could somehow pay for these liens, but none of these late fees and this fees and this penalty and that penalty. So they're actually just paying what they owe in the beginning. So, uh, let's work on it and, uh, get these, uh, I'd like to be able to come here one day and there's no liens and it's, oh, we don't do that anymore. Uh, we worked it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next speaker, Doc Rivers. Someone here from that, with that name, Doc Rivers. I don't see anyone. How about Wanda Jamerson? Do you want to come forward and speak? Your items, if you're speaking on item 101, it's been referred, it's been continued to July 26. Sir, you're not speaking? Thank you, sir. Vastalain Jamerson as well, not speaking? Okay, not speaking. But you're not speaking? Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Your item's been continued until July 26. Thank you, that concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's move on to public comment. Jose Martinez. Someone hear your name for Jose Martinez, Donna? Pierman? John Walsh? Is Jose Martinez here? I don't see anyone by that name. Donna? Pierman? This is public comment. Followed by Mr. Walsh.
Okay, and it's voting day. Donald Trump for president. Please, please do not vote for Mitch Englander for county supervisor. He doesn't care about us as a city council member, and he won't care about us, uh, there either. He closed video, uh, closed communication in the valley, closed the video conferencing. Republican, this is year to shine. You must vote for Donald Trump. Any other vote is for Hillary. Hillary is going to vet illegals and legals be able to vote in November. Democrats, uh, so the Democrats will defeat Republican nominee. She's a criminal against, is against a hatch act to destroy emails, destroying what she did wrong in Benghazi. Her husband and her allowed terrorists to go free, uh, before Bush. She responsible for Libya, going into Libya. Airports are more, have more war criminals on them than unsafe in any other time period. We must, uh, can't allow Hillary to win. Only Donald Trump for president. This is the time. Republicans, you must go out and vote for Donald Trump. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Vote, vote, vote. Anybody but Englander, if you're in that supervisory district. Anybody but Englander. Everybody who works here is telling me, we want him to, to leave. We, we, they're voting for him so they can get his ass out of city council, where he can do even more harm. And, uh, Englander wants the Democrats to think he's a Democrat. He wants the Republicans to think he's a Republican. And guess what the news media said yesterday? Your vote doesn't count. Because the news media, NBC, has decided that Hillary has won. She's the presumptuous, presumptive, uh, candidate for, uh, for, for president. That's bullshit. Vote now for Bernie, and if you think Hillary is good, don't vote for her because they say she already won.
Next speaker, Dagoberto Ramos, are you here? Good morning, followed by Eric Previn.
Good morning. I am a Uber driver, and I have to work, uh, 10 to 12 hours a day in order for me to make $100. That's barely enough money to pay my bills. I have to pay car insurance, telephone, um, life insurance, all kinds of insurances to be an Uber driver. And because of that, I cannot afford to pay the rent. We have 35,000, 35,000 people moving to the city of Los Angeles, thereby raising the rents very high. So I build a shedding back property of my mother in the city of Los Angeles, at Washington and Normandy, pretty much. And, uh, someone called City Hall, uh, and they said that I need to demolish my place. So a supervisor was sent over to my place, an intimidating supervisor, a seven-foot tall, uh, with a, um, old dark, uh, uh, car. And, um, instead of helping me resolve the problem, he has condemned my place of living. I need your help. I have attended, uh, Council General, uh, Councilman Zedillo's office, and they have basically placed a little Band-Aid over a cancerous situation. I need someone to guide me on how to resolve this issue.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Eric Previn.
Good morning, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn, uh, here in the public comment, which is a bit surprising because there is a room full of hundreds of DWP folks who want to talk about item 16. But once again, this body finds any way possible to sort of mix things up to its liking and to the, uh, I would say, the opposite of the benefit of ordinary residents who are trying to pay attention. That said, um, in my fight for transparency, I want to make it clear that there is not one office in the city of L.A. despite the fact that there are 700, um, public defenders, there is approximately 1,000 district attorneys, there's several, I would say, 500 or 600 city attorneys, and a large number of county council. Very few people are willing to assist in the process of bringing a suit to make this body do the appropriate thing. Like, for example, not have a special meeting where nobody, uh, can address, uh, a noticed item on the agenda. That, my friends, is a violation. So unfortunately, today, I would just simply say that we need more transparency, and any board, uh, or commission for the DWP should be maximally independent. That's my advice to you on that, and thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comments. Madam Clerk, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, if I have your attention, please. Madam Clerk, we're going to resume our council meeting, and we're going to move into our council presentation. President Westen, are you ready?
Madam President and members, the first thing I'd like to do is apologize for the delay. But I have a very important group of people that I would like to ask to come and stand beside me and behind me. So if we can have our founders of the Living Legend Foundation and our honorees for today, please come forward. And as you're coming here, that's I believe it was in 1979, when President Jimmy Carter indicated that the month of, of the month of June should be African-American Music Appreciation Month. In fact, I think back at that time, he called it Black Music Appreciation Month. Recently, our current president, President Barack Obama, felt that it was so important and that he signed a proclamation that indicated that the month of June should be celebrated. But also in that proclamation, he asked that political leaders and educators from all over the country make sure that we tell the rest of the world and our, our, our friends and neighbors here in America that the importance of this month. And what we're doing today is we're answering the call of President Obama and highlighting the fact that this month, June, recognizes individuals who are responsible for some of the most inspirational music ever created. Do me a favor and give a round of applause to the individuals that stand with me today for their creativity, for their love of the arts, and for the joy that they have provided to people, not just in the United States of America, but throughout the world. I want to quickly reference the Living Legend Foundation, uh, headed by Linda Morgan, because this foundation, this is the second year that I've had the pleasure to bring them before the council. But this foundation, this foundation was my, my third?
Yes.
Third, I've been informed, it's the third. See, you get a certain age. I can't, I can't remember yesterday, and so you're talking about three years ago. But this foundation has taken it upon themselves to make sure that this legacy and that this memory is never forget, forgotten in all of the accomplishments by these great musicians. Today, I just want to highlight a few of them before I, uh, ask Linda to come up and, and to say a few words. So honorees this year are, uh, Michael Majid, who, who, give him a round of applause. A professional keyboardist. Born in Seattle, Washington, and part of his resume includes touring with groups like Gladys Knight, Cheryl Lynn, El DeBarge, The Platters, and many, many more. Let's give, uh, Michael Majid a round, another round of applause. George, George Gilliam, a guitarist, uh, guitarist from Gary, Indiana. And for those of you that don't know, there is a strong Westen presence in Gary, Indiana. And as, and as a young man, every summer, my family would travel to, uh, Gary, uh, Indiana. So anyway, this, uh, guitarist and musical director and producer is from Gary, uh, Indiana. And this individual has, uh, formed at one point in time a big band featuring Jimmy Ellis, Bill Yancey, and Willie Pickens. Just give, uh, George another round of applause. Thank you so much, George. Quentin Denard, born in Detroit, Michigan, two and a, two and a half hours away from Cleveland, Ohio. The town, uh, of my birth started a, a career very, very early on. Uh, eventually became a jazz studies instructor at the University of Southern California. Has, uh, performed in world-renowned, uh, plays, and, uh, he has played with groups that are familiar to so many of us, like The Temptations, Aretha Franklin, uh, Willie Bobo, Dela Reese, Edwin Starr, and many more. Let's give a round of applause to Mr. Denard. Thank you for, for your gift.
Malette.
I love it, because I was going to say mallet.
I know.
Okay. Now, our next, uh, honoree is Rose Malette. Okay, not mallet, Malette. And she is a phenomenal singer, where individuals, I think, have compared her, uh, in style to, uh, Sarah Vaughan, Ella Fitzgerald. Two individuals that are giants in, in our community. She was born in Chicago, Illinois, as well. You can see her now on a regular basis, weekly basis. You can see her now on a regular basis, weekly basis, if you go to Palm Springs. And there are a couple of places I wanna highlight that, I'm, the Purple Room on Thursdays, Tuesdays, and Albert, you rearranged my notes, but I had it. I will be in Palm Springs this Sunday, so maybe I'll look for you. But anyway, she has, she's a regular, and then she's also gonna appear in the 2016 Idi Wau Jazz Festival in Idi Wau, California. Let's give her a round of applause. And Myrna Daniels, Myrna Daniels started out, I think, putting together just announcements about various groups that were performing, and she would drop these announcements off to various locations, and these announcements that she began doing in the mid-eighties have evolved into an actual newspaper, the L.A. Jazz Scene Newspaper, and to the point now where she's modernized and has a website, and you can find that by looking at LAJazzScene.Buzz, and now, these, she highlights and lets you know, so for those of you that want to get a feel for what's going on and where to go, she's the one that really keeps us informed. Let's please give Ms. Daniels a round of applause. Now, there's so much more that I could say where it relates to the importance of music, the importance of jazz, but I tell you, it is important for us to remember those who blaze the trail. Because of many people that are standing beside and behind me, they have inspired so many young people, so that the young people will now pick up this mantle and continue to entertain and present gifts to the people, not only in our country, but throughout the world. So I'd like to ask Linda to come up and say a round of applause. So Linda, please come up. Let's talk about the foundation and all of the great people behind me. Linda Morgan. And I'm so sorry, I forgot three years.
That's okay. Thank, I wanna first start out by thanking you, sir, for bringing us here and acknowledging us for the past three years. Our foundation has been around for now seven years, and in that seven years of time, these five make up 110 legends of jazz and blues that we've honored here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much for that applause. As we move forward, we love for the City Council to participate annually with us in our recognition of these 110 jazz and blues legends going forward. As they continue to leave us, we still want to be able to recognize them for the preservation of the work that they have done. I appreciate coming here today to bring them, as well as their families that are here with us to celebrate. We do have our celebration this evening in the city of Inglewood at a club called Lavender Blue. We're gonna jam and play music, so if any of you would like to come and be a part of that, we welcome you as well. I also am in the business of promoting our next jazz and blues legends. I'm the board member of an organization called the Charles Dola Coker Foundation, which one of our legends is here, Ms. Sible Coker, who is a soror to Mr. West's wife. She's right behind you. And we, we are training up the next generation of jazz and blues legends, and we have a jazz showcase on Saturday at the same location from 2:00 to 5:00. We welcome you to come out and see the next generation of jazz and blues legends at Lavender Blue in Inglewood. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Okay, let me quickly pass out, and we can get a couple of photo. Mikel Majid, where are you?
Right here, right here.
Just grab me, man. Get close. Don't go anywhere. George Gilliam.
Right here.
All right. How are you, so come on, get close, I don't bite. Rumor, all those stories are not true, I do not bite. Quentin Denard, where are you? Come on up. Thank you for your service. Rose Malette.
Thank you.
Give me, give me, give me, uh, and where's Myrna Daniels? All right, come on, and thank you for all of your work. Let's get close, get a couple photos. Yes, we're gonna get one in the back, but I wanna have one right now. Everybody say jazz.
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 Thank you all, thank you, Madam President. We would follow Mr. Lord to the back.
Just follow Albert.
Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to item 16. Mr. Westen?
Thank you, Madam President and, and members. The mayor of this city, coupled with our colleague Felipe Fuentes, suggested that we have a conversation about changes and reform to our DWP department. We on the council took this very seriously. We did the very best that we could to seek counsel and advice from every corner of the city of Los Angeles. This committee, the Rules Committee that conducted these hearings, I wanna compliment Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson for all of the time that they spent. Eight hearings we had, three of those hearings were had in the community, one at City Hall in the community and after hours, members, one here at City Hall, one at the Valley-Van Nu City Hall, one in the district that I represent, so that we could get individuals from the mid and the south side of town to come and participate. We partnered with, again, the mayor's office, we partnered with the neighborhood councils, we partnered with Mr. Fuentes' office, we did everything that we could to afford people the opportunity to speak. We incorporated Dr. Fred Pickle in this conversation, and a very spirited conversation we had. The recommendations that are before you today is a combination of recommendations that we received from all over the city of Los Angeles. These recommendations are not just the recommendations of this committee, they are incorporations of requests that we heard from our residents of the city of Los Angeles along the way. This proposal has something in it for everyone, and even though we did the very best that we could to be perfect, other than grandchildren, nothing is perfect, but we sought perfection. Now, I don't think that this is the end of the work that we need to do. I believe that it's the beginning, but I also believe that this is a very, very significant first step, where it relates to reforming and changing DWP to put it on a course so that it can be more efficient as it moves forward delivering services to the residents of the city of Los Angeles. With that said, I would like to ask our CLA, our CAO, to come forward, coupled with the general manager of the DWP, Dr. Pickle, and sit at the center table. They members, if you would, are going to walk you through a series of recommendations, and I will be here to kinda lead them through that analysis, and of course, we look forward to have conversations here. On top of the eight committee hearings that we did have, members, remember that we discussed this issue twice in council. We had a conversation that dealt with the entire package of reform, we had a separate council meeting that dealt specifically with the transfer and litigation. So I think that we have met on this about as much as we can, and that now it's time to have this conversation, and at the end of the day, I will make a request that we send this to the city attorney's office, so that they can begin drafting, hear me, begin drafting this. There will still be opportunities for more engagement from the council, but I do think it is important today that we get the city attorney's office started. Again, I can't say enough about the participation from the mayor's office, and I'd like to, if I might, Madam President, see if at this time, Mr. Fuentes might wanna chime in, or, because a lot of the credit should be given to you, because you gave us, I think, one hell of a document to work from, and I hope at the end of the day that you find at least some pride, because we tried to address every concern that, that you listed, and every concern that the mayor listed in his list of principles. So with that said, Madam President, I'd like to defer to Mr. Fuentes and then come back as we have the conversation with our, our CAO and CLA's office. So again, thank you all, colleagues, for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, for your attention. I, I'm going to try to be brief here, colleagues, because I, I think that what's before you is pretty self-evident. There's a host of reforms that are being proposed that I think have benefited a great deal from all of the work that our president has put into it. And so let me be the first to admit that I started off in a place that I thought was, and if you know me, pretty, pretty, pretty dead on, but a lot has changed, and I've come to learn even more through this process. I've recognized that the policy is a lot more dynamic than what it is that we originally proposed in the originating motion. That being said, I think, colleagues, what you've got before you does an awful lot, but let me just zoom out a little bit to the 30,000-foot level and help people understand what's at stake here. We are a tremendous city. We have a Department of Water and Power that is just the biggest asset that a city can have. If you live in the city of Los Angeles, oftentimes it's a mystery to you on how things work. If you go out to the Owens Valley, it's an absolute legacy on why things work in the city of Los Angeles. The footprint that this utility has, the responsibility, the ownership that every single employee of that utility has over this great asset is tremendous. Sometimes I enjoy seeing it on my way to Inyo County in a helicopter, other times I like seeing it on the 395. Sometimes we lament a little bit of it when we see a pipe burst in the city of Los Angeles, but when you see the men and women of the utility go and fix it lickety-split, it helps you understand that we need to celebrate this utility. We need to figure out how it is that we can be of best assistance to the ratepayer. We need to figure out how to modernize this utility for the future. The future is tremendous. You look at any single newspaper these days, and you see that we're talking about racing to Mars, we're talking about autonomous vehicles, we're talking about building a greater society, and it's all predicated on electrons and molecules. It, the cornerstone of this economy, the cornerstone of our success, the cornerstone of our future, is the Department of Water and Power. Now, that sounds big. Ladies and gentlemen, it is huge, and so we need to figure out how to keep pace with modern times. We have to be that innovation state in Los Angeles and in California and in the United States. It's a tall order. It's not gonna be fast. Unfortunately, when we try to change policy, oftentimes, it's square pegs into round holes. It's not easy. This is a modest step, albeit a very significant step. It's one that is rooted in research, analysis, and truthfully, it's rooted also in a little bit of us understanding what works and what doesn't. So proceed with caution, colleagues, because I think what's before us is something that is an opportunity, and if, if we don't seize it, I'm afraid that it'll be a little while longer before we do. Our history has been well-intentioned, the results, as it pertains to trying to modernize the utility, hasn't always kept up with our efforts. This is a very exciting time for me, and particularly because I geek out on this stuff, but more so because there is a perfect confluence of activity, attention, and I hope support for the measure that's before you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I have a number of cards, but I see that our presenters are ready to present, so gonna go ahead and, you have the floor, Mr. Santana, if you wanna start.
Good morning. Sharon So at the CLA's office. With me are...
Miguel Santana, CAO.
Fred Pickle, Executive Director, Office of Public Accountability and Reap or Advocate.
RC Edwards, General Manager, Department of Water and Power.
Council members, the item before you is Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations and Neighborhoods Committee Report on a Series of Recommendations for a Proposed Ballot Measure for November Related to DWP Reform Measures. We are in the process of passing out a handout that will help track the changes, hopefully you have that before you. We have a series of recommendations that are grouped together between charter recommendations as well as non-charter recommendations as well, so we will begin, Miguel and I will alternate between the topics. So the first matter before you is a proposal related to the board structure of the DWP. The current charter currently provides that the composition of the board is a voluntary, part-time board. The proposal before you would actually increase the number to seven members. The current term of board members today is a five-year period with staggered terms. The proposal before you would actually change the time period, the term would be a three-year staggered term, and an ordinance would be approved at a later time to provide the transition. The current requirements for a board member today is only that you need to be a registered voter of the city of Los Angeles. What's before you is a number proposal... What's before you is a number of proposals related to additional requirements for board members. The first item would be that the board member would not be a registered lobbyist with the city, as well as not having participated in any DWP-related activities for 12 months prior to appointment. Qualifications, this will be the first time that there would be qualifications provided for a DWP board member. The qualifications that are proposed for those individual board members is that they either have experience in utility management, water and power policy and operations, environmental policy, business, finance, labor relations, consumer advocacy, or neighborhood councils and community organizations. The board itself today, they receive a $50 attendance fee. The matter before you would actually create, allow the creation of a stipend for the board members. This would be consistent to address some of the additional duties that would be proposed under this charter reform and to address, to provide commensurate compensation for serving on this board. With regard to removal, currently, the charter allows the mayor to remove board members only. That is the only removal process. What is before you is a proposal which is similar to an ethics commissioner whereby the mayor would be able to remove a board commissioner with the concurrence of majority vote of the city council or the council by three-fourths vote. And as stated, this is similar to the current ethics commission.
The next item is still on page one of the sheet that you have in front of you regarding the general manager and the appointment. Currently, the board appoints the general manager, subject to confirmation from the mayor and the city council. What's being proposed is a process similar to the selection of the police chief, which establishes that the general manager, the Personnel Department, refers six qualified candidates to the board, and the board then submits three candidates to the mayor for review and an appointment of one. And the mayor's appointment is subject, would be subject to council's approval.
On page two, the next topic is board support. Currently, the board is supported by the employees of DWP. The board does not have any direct staff support or clerical staff support. So the Rules Committee has proposed that the creation of a DWP analyst office. This office would provide the policy and fiscal analysis to assist the board. The executive director, a new exempt position would be created, reporting directly to the board, and this executive director would have the ability to appoint positions to support the board.
The next item pertains to the Office of Public Accountability. The first is regarding the budget that is set. Currently, the budget, the charter establishes that no less than .025% of the DWP's annual revenues generated solely from the sale of water and electric energy from the previous fiscal year establishes the budget. Today, that represents 1.13 million. What's being proposed is doubling that amount to .05%, which, if it were in place today, would represent 2.26 million. The next is regarding the reappointment of the officer of public accountability. Currently, the charter does not have a process for the reappointment. What's being proposed is that the executive director of the OPA may be appointed to a second five-year term by the city council with mayoral approval without a new citizens' committee being required to be set up.
Still on page two is related to proposals related to the council oversight and department independence. The first issue is related to the board's jurisdiction to act on certain contracts. So if you look at item 1L, currently, there are a number of contracts, proposals, approval, long-term contracts that currently require city council approval. The Rules Committee report actually recommends that some of the council approvals be deleted to expedite the processing of contracts by DWP. However, the 245 authority, which allows council to assert jurisdiction over those matters, would remain in place. The next item is related to rate setting. As you know, under the current charter, rate setting is by ordinance, requiring the mayor and council approval. The Rules Committee report is proposing a process in which the city council would approve in advance a four-year strategic plan, which would help determine the revenue requirements and costs needed to maintain the system. This process, as long as the council has approved that strategic plan and as long as the rates are in line with that strategic plan, that it would not require to come back to the city council for approval. Anything outside of those parameters would come back to the city council. Balanced with these, this additional independence would be the council's ability to request additional inflow from the Department of Water and Power. The council currently may request information from DWP, but does not have any direct authority over the board or the DWP to report. This would, the Rules Committee recommendation would actually provide authorization to the council to request any additional information for review only regarding any actions or pending actions of the board or the DWP. And the final issue related to council oversight, departmental independence, is the council's Charter Section 245 authority. The council does have this authority to assert jurisdiction. The Additional Rules Committee recommendation would be to allow that an ordinance, if approved by council, would actually lift that 245 ability for any contracts less than a certain amount. So that is something that would be determined later after any ballot measure is passed by the voters.
The next matter pertains to personnel and hiring. Currently, the DWP is bound by Article 10 of the charter, which establishes a civil service system and the salary-setting authority. What's being proposed is permissive language, which gives your council the authority through collective bargaining to make amendments to items pertaining to the civil service. It requires that it be consistent with federal and state law pertaining to merit-based hiring, retention, discharge, EOC compliance, and protection from political corrosion. And it also allows for periodic audits that can result in the salary-setting authority and changes to the sort of being revoked. It also allows your council to delegate the salary-setting authority to the DWP board. It's important to point out that this permissive language is not a mandate or a requirement that changes be made. It allows you to begin the process of collective bargaining. That would be informed by bargain instructions that would be provided to your team, who will be representing management's position, and ultimately be returned to your council for final approval, should there be any changes that are ultimately presented.
At the bottom of page three relates to billing. As you know, the current billing system by DWP is a bi-monthly. This would be a charter amendment would be to implement a monthly billing cycle no later than January 1st of 2020. At the top of page four, we begin the non-charter recommendations of the Rules Committee. First item relates to the board structure and compensation. As indicated earlier, the current board compensation is $50 per meeting. If the ballot measure is approved, there would be an ordinance setting a stipend, currently estimated at $2,000 per month, indexed to CPI. This is similar to an amount from the County Regional Planning Commission that is in place, which currently allows $150 per meeting, not to exceed 15 meetings per month. And as indicated earlier, the term would be changed to a three-year term staggered with a transition ordinance to be approved.
The next matter pertains to the salary of the general manager. Currently, the board sets the GM salary pursuant to guidelines established by the council. It is being proposed that the city attorney prepare an ordinance allowing the board to set the GM salary and the ability to adjust annually. And it also establishes that those adjustments will be subject to the consent of the Executive Employee Relations Committee, ERC.
The next area is the Office of Public Accountability relating to access to information. Under the current charter, the Office of Public Accountability has access to information to fulfill its responsibilities. The Rules and Elections Committee recommendation would be to provide forward ordinance that would allow the OPA access to all appropriate and necessary documents of DWP as allowed by law, but while also respecting the current authority and roles of the board and the OPA. Next section relates to hiring plan and exemptions. The OPA has indicated that lack of staffing has prevented the office from fulfilling all of their responsibilities. This ballot measure would, if combined with additional resources, that this would provide a hiring plan for the OPA to address some of those staffing shortfalls, including civil service and exempt positions.
The next matter, again, pertains to personnel hiring, and it requests that the ERC, with the assistance of the CAO, Personnel Department, and DWP, to issue bargain instructions to the DWP specifically to help expedite hiring and address those current limitations as seen by the department.
At the top of page five, there are a series of recommendations by your Rules Committee relating to additional authorities that could be provided to the department administratively. The first one relates to the general manager's contracting authority. We've heard the general manager indicate the difficulty, given the limitations of $150,000 as being the maximum contract amount. The Rules Committee is recommending that the general manager be provided with additional authority for contracts consistent with other utilities to provide a new maximum of $5 million. Any contract in excess of $5 million would still require board approval and also be subject to any 245 authority of the council. To balance this, there would be a new section requiring contractor quarterly reporting by the department. This would require the department to submit quarterly reports to the board and city council with respects to any contracts pending, approved, or terminated by the general manager, and require an annual listing of all contracts awarded by DWP on its website within 60 days of the end of each calendar year. The board's contracting authority currently is limited to three years. Rules Committee recommendation is to put forward an ordinance that would increase that authority up to five years, and therefore, those contracts would not require council approval, and also to allow 10 years for contracts involving specialized construction equipment or software that is offered by one vendor. And all other contracts that are greater than five years will require the mayor and council approval unless otherwise specified by charter or ordinance. The next area relates to design, build, and power contracts. Current administrative code provisions require that design, build may only be used if by ordinance, and so each time the department wants to put forward a design, build agreement, that it requires council approval. Same thing with power contracts, requiring ordinance to be approved by the council. If this ballot measure is approved, the proposal by the Rules Committee is that the ordinance requirement would be eliminated for both power contracts and design, build contracts. Item number 16 relates to the DWP's contracting authority. Contracts can only be awarded to the lowest bidder. The Rules Committee is putting forward a recommendation to have an ordinance to amend the LA Administrative Code section to allow DWP to actually engage in RFPs and competitive negotiation for the purchase of specialized equipment using both price and other evaluation factors. This would assist DWP in making additional considerations, depending upon the type of contract and depending upon the type of equipment, and using other factors besides just price. At the top of page six, item number 16, relating to DWP strategic planning. If the ballot measure is approved, as discussed earlier, an ordinance would be acquired to establish the timelines, procedures, and requirements of that four-year strategic plan and revenue requirements. And the last administrative change here is the Mayor's Executive Directive 4. That executive directive does require that any time that the board considers anything that will eventually require council approval, that the CAO must conduct an analysis for the mayor's office. And the proposal of the Rules Committee is to request the mayor to exempt DWP from the Mayor's Executive Directive 4, or to modify and/or revise the objectives of these recommendations.
And finally, as part of the committee's action, there are a number of report backs that have been instructed. I'll go through them quickly. Number six is a report back instructing the CAO and the CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney, the Office of Public Accountability and DWP, to report back on the role of the OPA and recommend any potential changes to the role of the OPA that could be further defined by ordinance. Number eight is a request that the city attorney, in consultation with the board, to report back on the role of the board in the oversight of litigation pertaining to DWP and recommend any potential changes to oversight that could be strengthened through ordinance while maintaining representation of the DWP by the city attorney. Number nine, pertaining to personnel and hiring, instructs the CAO, the CLA, and the Personnel Department, and requests the DWP to report back within 60 days with a plan to address the hiring needs of the DWP. The plan shall include the necessary resources subject to board approval, including budgetary allocations, which will reflect all direct and indirect cost, and a draft MOU adoption of, I'm sorry, sorry, MOA, rather, that includes specific performance metrics. The next item is item number 18, which instructs the CAO, with the assistance of the CLA and DWP, to report back on the options that would allow the board to assume all collective bargaining responsibilities with regard to the DWP bargaining units. Next is number 19 regarding the power revenue transfer. They request the city attorney to report to your council on any updates regarding outstanding litigation. Number 20 are other items, including a request that the DWP, with the assistance of the Board of Public Works, the Bureau of Sanitation, the CLA, and the CAO, to initiate a study and report back with an analysis on creating a fully integrated water group. Number 21 is a request that the DWP, with the assistance of the city attorney, the CLA, and the CAO, to report back on potential options to reduce the financial liability of the Department of Recreation and Parks, nonprofit entities that provide publicly accessible open space to low-income seniors in respect to electricity and water rates. Number 22 is a request that the Department of Water and Power report back on the options and recommendations that would help to ensure access to clean energy solutions, which are equitable, and participation in which is not limited by geographical location nor household income. And then finally, number 23 is a request that the DWP report back on the potential of creating an executive-level position that would ensure the interests of the underserved low-income customer market segment across the board. I think that concludes all the items.
Mr. Edwards, would you like to add anything, or Dr. Pickle?
A few brief remarks, ma'am. Thank you very much. My comments will be narrowed to those that I think are the most critical to both the short- and long-term success of the enterprise. And here's the crux of the matter. DWP needs to develop greater productivity and efficiencies within the utility in order to redirect those savings in the best interest of the ratepayer. Bear in mind, DWP is ratepayer dollars-supported, not treasury-supported. But there is tremendous upward pressure on rates to fund a variety of critical initiatives, and it stands to reason ratepayers want us to fund... and it stands to reason ratepayers want us to fund at least part of that with internal efficiencies, increased productivity, streamlining and eliminating redundant processes, and to do that, we need charter and code changes. Let me make a brief comment on the procurement side. By way of background, the Board of DWP Commissioners does not have a dollar cap on what they can approve. I can't recall there ever being one, given their proprietary board. The only cap is with respect to the duration of the contract. Very limiting. I'll get to it in a moment, but I want to give you a sense of scale. The utility has a $17 billion capital program scheduled across the next five years. That's $3.5 billion a year in capital, or a spend that comes to $300 million to $400 million a month if you allocated it across all 12. There are two very costly issues in our current process that reforms can address. One is the amount of processing that currently required is laborious and time-consuming, even for routine business expenses such as power poles, switches, valves. And a contributing factor to that process is all contracts over three years automatically come to council. The timeline to reach council, then, can be unpredictable. It also triggers reviews by the CLA, the CAO, goes through E&amp;E Committee. There have been many times we've had to tell our contractors it could take upwards of a year or more to gain the necessary approvals. I'm also aware where contractors' bids, they would frequently pad them as they tried to offload the market risk of that wait time from them to DWP. If we could just move from a contract automatically being required to come to council if it's over three years to over five, and maybe 10 under more narrow circumstances, that change alone would reduce a lot of a necessary but costly process, and council's current authority to extend jurisdiction over board action, the 245, would not be diminished unless this body revises the charter to adjust 245 limits in some way. The second costly issue to the current cap is the GM delegation, which is currently set at $150,000. And when you view the spend of the utility, you will note it's pretty inconsistent to look at $150,000 approval authority when you're spending $300 to $400 million a month. What that means is that literally everything goes to the board, and it fills up the board agenda, including all the processing needed to take there. And by way of example, I took $1.2 million in the purchase of black electric tape. Truly, I can assure you that my staff understands how to assess black electric tape and purchase it appropriately. We had $1.4 for meter locks, $3.6 million pole trussing. These are all routine and standard purchases in our industry and do not warrant the extensive processing they get now. The ratepayer advocate, and correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, the ratepayer advocate actually suggested a delegation of authority of $15 million to the GM, given our spend. We brought forward $5 million. It's fairly consistent with the industry. Sacramento Municipal Utility District, which is far smaller than LA, has a $5 million cap on delegated authority. With respect to hiring, we've got to move faster and farther with greater flexibility if we're going to maintain our competitive advantage with respect to rates. Personnel system, in my view, has been bureaucratized over the years, and it's been altered in ways that make it difficult for DWP to access talent in the timeframe that it needs it. You'll see more change impacting DWP in the next five years than you have seen in the last 10. And if you want DWP to be successful in an environment that's changing as rapidly as ours is, we need to have some control over our destiny. At present, when resources are cut to the Personnel Department, they, of course, reduce their workload accordingly. When I arrived at DWP, that meant we had 186 exam requests outstanding, and even though we were experiencing two-hour call wait times, it still took over a year to hire customer service reps. Lastly, let's talk about maintaining control over the DWP. The DWP Board is intended to help depoliticize decisions and strike a balance between what we hear from our customers, our policymakers, and a host of internal and external stakeholders. Council will continue to have whatever level of 245 ability they deem prudent, but the first time, you're going to get something more. One of the recommendations instructs DWP to bring forward every four years a strategic plan along with the rates to fund it. Council can be provided multiple opportunities at their discretion to review that plan, offer revisions input prior to it being taken to the DWP Board for approval. If approved by the DWP Board, it will then still come to council for approval, and council can, at that time, always decline and remand it back to the board for further consideration. I think this will allow far more broader involvement on the part of policymakers to ensure the board is crystal clear on council's expectations. And I appreciate the opportunity to make brief comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pickle?
I'd like to stress again something that was said in the beginning. DWP is going to be facing a huge amount of change because of changes in computation and information technology, from changes in energy technology and from changes in water technology over the next five to 10 years. And while DWP is very good at solving routine emergencies, we'll be facing a whole bunch of new surprises as we move forward in new technology. So we need the ability to adapt. Our report on the billing system challenges a year ago pointed out the need to be able to hire faster and procure faster. And we also added a component: under dire and urgent circumstances, they should be able to go even faster. And dire and urgent is a concept of if it's putting a big stress on employees or a big stress on customers, it should be accelerated beyond the standard. The proposals here make a major step in giving us the flexibility to move forward on better procurement, faster procurement, and also faster and better hiring. We support this going forward. Second, we were also asked a question about strengthening the Office of Public Accountability. This puts the key item in the charter, and it gives time for other items to be addressed in a thoughtful way, as we're adapting to DWP's mission as well. Changes to the OPA should follow the changes to DWP.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Wesson?
This is a very serious issue, sergeants. Mr. Herman, you're not going to come here and disrupt this meeting. And so we're not going to sit up here and listen to sheeps and lambs, okay? This is serious. We're not going to play this game with him today. Now, what I'd like to, and sergeants, I mean that, if he continues, then have him removed. This is not a joke. We're talking about DWP change. We're talking about people's lives. We're talking about a lot of very important things. It's not funny. It's not a joke. I want to thank the people at the center table, but I want to highlight some other folk, and then I think we should go into public comment. And the reason why I want to highlight these individuals now is because I do not know how long they'll be here. They may have to leave, and I want them to know that we appreciate the work that they've done, that they've done. I did thank the mayor, but it would be, we have to identify Deputy Mayor Romero in particular. We did get some feed, some suggestions from Ron Galperin, from Mike Fuer. But I want to highlight that all of the neighborhood councils that participated and the neighborhood council alliances. Starting with the first meeting that we had, we partnered with the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition. That was the meeting we had here. The one in the Valley, we partnered with Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. The one in my district was South LA Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. I have to really highlight Mr. Tony Wilkinson, who's part of the Neighborhood Council Committee. That is the DWP MOU Oversight Committee. And believe it or not, I really have to thank Mr. Humphreiville for the DWP, for the advocacy committee that he sits on, because they were engaged and they participated. We had business organizations that came and spoke before the committee, the Chamber, VICA, CCA, LA Business Council, the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce. We had environmental groups, the Sierra Club, Climate Resolve, LANE, Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, and of course, Sharon So and her staff, Miguel and his staff, and the Rule Committee staff. So again, I can't say enough, and I don't even know what's going to happen once we actually begin this conversation, but I still want to thank you for your service and all of your hard work. So at this time, if we could do public comment, I think we do like 10 and 10, 10 for, 10 against, a minute each. We start it like that, and we'll see how it goes. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, folks. We're going to start public comment briefly.
Okay, we'll start out, like I said, we'll do 10 and 10. Minute each. We start off with Bob Schoonover, we, Alice Goff, Teresa Sanchez, please come forward, and then Elaine Greenstone. Please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, Council members. Bob Schoonover, President, SEIU Local 721. I know there's been a lot of work done here. A lot of the suggestions are really good. There are some inherent problems, though. You know, the civil service system was created as a protection mechanism for the public and the employee at work. It ensures a dedicated and a process. I think we're in danger with this initiative, the way it is, of jeopardizing that method and creating ourselves a problem that existed before civil service, involving favoritism and cronyism. And I would also just say that there is nothing that's going to improve the hiring that the general manager was talking about in this process, okay? We are in danger of creating a problem unless we fine-tune this issue a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So if I can get Alice, Teresa Sanchez, Ms. Greenstone, followed by Cheryl Parisi.
Good morning, Alice Goff, AFSMI Local 3090, representing clerical and support services employees. And while we appreciate the conversation on the issue of much-needed reforms, from day one, from day one, we have opposed removal from the civil service system. In keeping with that position, we request that you remove item P and can move forward with the rest of the recommendations. As Bob said, the civil service system is what has afforded fair and equitable hiring and protections on the job. Removing the DWP from civil service will cement what has been the perception of employees in council-controlled departments, that the Department of Water and Power operates as though it is not a city department. Most importantly, it takes away the promotional and transfer opportunities for other qualified city employees in various classifications. We request strongly that you consider removing P.
Thank you. So I don't see Ms. Sanchez. Do see Ms. Greenstone, followed by Ms. Cheryl Parisi. Please come forward.
Good morning, Ellen Greenstone, Rothner Siegel &amp; Greenstone, Council for the Coalition of Los Angeles City Unions. You have two letters that I wrote to the council about the legal issues involving paragraph P. You needn't take it from me, the CAO's report identifies the legal liability that the city faces by waiving DWP employees out of the civil service system. The civil service system gives rise to constitutionally vested rights in the system and in individual rights, rights regarding classification system, transfer, promotion, and displacement on layoff. Those rights are citywide, and they are exercised by employees across all departments. Waiving DWP employees out of civil service would give rise to legal liability outlined in the CAO report.
Thank you. So if I can get Cheryl Parisi, Victor Gordo, and Thomas Habercorn, Habercorn.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Cheryl Parisi. I am the Executive Director of AFSMI District Council 36 and the Chair of the Coalition of LA City Unions, representing 22,000 city workers, poor members of SEIU, AFSMI, Launa, the Teamsters, operating engineers, and the building trades. We stand before you today to strongly encourage you to remove measure P from this set of reforms. There has been significant work done on the analysis of problems at the DWP, numerous public hearings. Our coalition attended each and every one of those hearings. And quite honestly, there was no testimony from community members about the need to eliminate civil service provisions for the Department of Water and Power. Instead, what we heard from community groups and citizens
Thank you.
...was the strength and the protections that is provided by the civil service system to all city residents.
Thank you. So Mr. Gordo, followed by Mr. Thomas Habercorn, followed by Brenda, Brenna Norton.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, Victor Gordo, on behalf of the Coalition and Launa Local 777. The biggest misconception is that civil services protections was created to protect employees, when in fact, it was created over 100 years ago to protect ratepayers and the residents of the City of Los Angeles. Over 100 years ago, the decision was made that that should be the priority, and it's worked since. And you are about to unravel that civil service system with such a record of success at the utility. The employees, all that are behind you, have all competed for the positions that they have, and each of those positions represents an asset to the City of Los Angeles. And each of those employees has competed for that. Going forward, item P, if it's not removed, puts that in danger. We don't know what we're going to receive, because it's a blank check that you're asking the voters to approve, a blank check that they may not be able to afford, because you won't be able to undo the changes to the civil services.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Habercorn, Brenna Norton, and Walker Foley.
Hello and good morning. I'm a Los Angeles resident who is here to express strong opposition to the specific elements of the reform proposal titled Department Independence. I appreciate very much that Councilmember Wesson and others have stated they do not support privatizing our city's utility. However, in this section, it proposes to remove mayor and city council control over the granting of all franchises, concessions, and the use of competitive seal proposal methods for all design-build contracts. This could allow for a private water company to enter into a concession or a design-build contract with DWP. We must retain city council oversight over these decisions and remove the section on power contracts. I am for no on measure L. The LA DWP is the largest municipally-owned and-operated public utility in the United States. I'm a developer of large shopping centers throughout the 13 western states, and we, Los Angeles, are the envy of progressive municipalities in each of these states, and I have seen privatization begin in these states in just this way. I stand for greater public scrutiny, not less. This is the power and water for the people of Los Angeles, and thank you for letting me.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Norton, followed by Mr. Foley, followed by Connor Everett.
Good morning. My name is Brenna Norton with Food and Water Watch. We are a consumer watchdog nonprofit that has worked to stop water privatization efforts across the country. I know that Councilmember Wesson, thank you, and many other council members have stated that they do not support privatizing our city's utility. However, the reform proposal paves the way for the privatization of our utility. Section L, Department Independence, removes mayor and council oversight over franchises, concessions, design-build contracts. This could allow DWP to enter into a contract with a private water company to privatize parts of our utility. No approval would run by council. While the DWP should be able to buy tape, they should not be able to privatize the services of our utility without your oversight. That is why we elect our council members. The proposal mentions council would retain 245 power. However, if no one in the committee or council is watching or approving, no one would know when to assert jurisdiction over such privatization efforts. And the ratemaking proposal must be amended. A true reform would
elements of the DWP reform proposal before you, as it pertains to dismantling the civil service system. Specifically, I'd like to encourage a no on Measures L and P. This language could undermine badly needed efforts to improve the ways in which LADWP sources its power. The city's continued use of natural gas comes at great risk to Los Angeles residents and the environment. We're still cleaning up a current disaster. And in order to make the necessary transition to 100% renewable energy by 2035, public oversight and involvement in power contracts is vital. In addition, waiving civil service protections for a significant number of city employees is not reform, and is not less than the original proposal to exclude DWP from civil service. If LADWP wants to change the terms of where the civil service exam is placed, then they should take the issue up in their collective bargaining contracts with the union. And this is what Measure 9 and 10 already recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. And would you take your seat? Nobody called you? Please sit down. This is the second time I warned you.
For the record, that was Mr. Herman.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Connor Everett, thank you very much for this opportunity. I would only say that less oversight by the electeds does not bring us any kind of reform. I would point to the Ratepayer Advocate, which has not brought us greater environmental reform, challenging the feed-in tariffs as well. I would say personally, my family, it took seven years to deal with an $8,000 water bill, and nothing happened until I came to council and mentioned it. We were also spiked by DWP and had to end up selling our house without the recourse of coming back to the council. We have problems. I also reiterate the comments made by my friends about public employees and making sure the agency stays public, not private. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'd now like to call on Mr. Brian DiArcy, Jessica Goodheart, John Pokorski, please come forward.
Good morning. Those are the people that deliver your water and power. I'm here to kind of take away all this phantom concerns. First of all, all that the recommendation does is recommends that the salary-setting authority negotiate a substitute under federal, state, and local law. The use of the term eliminating civil service is a misnomer. There is no intention on the part of this union to change very much of anything except to take away a layer and negotiate substitute provisions. I can allay all of their concerns. None of the things that they've said are going to happen are going to happen. It is simply to take away the redundancy of having it. I follow the rules, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, yeah. All right. Okay, Ms. Goodheart.
My name is Jessica Goodheart. I'm with the L.A. Alliance for a New Economy. I believe that if we're serious about meeting our clean energy goals, if we're serious about making our department more effective at serving customers, if we're serious about modernizing the utility, we need to address the cumbersome contracting roles and the hiring process. By making these reforms, I think we'll be able to serve customers better, create new classifications, do customer outreach in a better way, and we'll be able to create more jobs for the community. I want to highlight again the utility pre-craft training program, which is successfully bringing an incredibly diverse group of women and men into jobs at DWP, but it moves too slow. Folks are waiting too long because the process is too slow. So I urge you to move forward with those reforms. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is John Pokorski, President of IBW Local 18. And all we're here for, the employees here, is for you to create a draft proposal to expedite the hiring process at LADWP. That's all they want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, let me get Graciela Guyer, Sarah Rascón, Blanca de la Cruz, please come forward. And then followed by Mr. Wilkinson. Hi.
Hi, I'm Graciela Guyer with the Sierra Club, and I want to support all of the work that's gone into this. But I did want to raise two significant changes, and I know there's been a lot of talk about accountability and transparency, and I think that this would help the public understand how critical this measure is at this time, but specifically setting goals and metrics around greenhouse gas reductions that the DWP is tracking, around local water, and around equity, so that all of the citizens and communities across Los Angeles can have faith and transparency about making sure that the investments that we just heard about, so much money that's about to be invested in, so many people that are about to be hired in the next five to 10 years, that we're all getting our fair share of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come in forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. Sarah Rascón with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of over 1,600 business organizations representing over 35 industry sectors, we believe reforming how DWP is managed will accelerate efficiency, and more efficiency would relieve pressure from future rate increases. Some of DWP's operations are outdated, requiring updates to improve its effectiveness. From the ongoing meetings and amendments proposed, we're very supportive of the procurement and contracting language. We appreciate the commitment to a continued discussion on hiring, but would like to see something concrete, more than what is currently recommended, a thorough solution addressing the civil service program. At this point, we have concerns about the creation of a new entity, the DWP Analyst Office, that could create more bureaucracy and divert funds from infrastructure. Lastly, we oppose the three-year board term, seeing that as a brief term limit could create unintended consequences. Lastly, we would also recommend that the board remain voluntary and not paid to maintain consistency with other proprietary boards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get Ms. De la Cruz.
Good morning. I'm Blanca De la Cruz with California Housing Partnership, representing nonprofit owners of affordable housing and the low-income renters they serve in the City of Los Angeles. We support DWP reform efforts, and more specifically, we support institutionalizing changes that would provide equitable access to DWP services to low-income customers through Recommendation 22, which looks at adoption, looks at options to ensure access to clean energy solutions in an equitable way, and also Recommendation 22, which looks at the potential of creating an executive-level position focused on the interest of the underserved low-income customer market segment. These recommendations will help with the adoption of the ballot measure, because equitable access is good customer service. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Wilkinson, Jonathan Panfree, and Jack Humpherville, if you could begin to make your way to the center out. Mr. Wilkinson, good to see you and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Tony Wilkinson, Panorama City, speaking as an individual. I want to address the concerns of the city's labor partners over the affirmative civil service reform provision. Labor deserves both good faith and honesty in its negotiations. As a citizen participant, I can assure you that there is good faith on the part of everyone in this city that I have come across of not removing civil service-like protections from the Department of Water and Power. The other part of this is the honesty that the department truly needs, changes in its existing civil service provisions and negotiated labor provisions in order to get the flexibility it needs to renew its labor force. So I strongly support this. I'd go actually even further and include an exemption at the county civil service level of 10%, which itself could be part of the negotiated settlement with the union, but would give immediate reform to hiring pending a reform package. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, one of our panelists, come on.
Thank you very much, Council President. My name is Jonathan Parfrey. I had the pleasure of serving as a Commissioner at the department for five years. I'm currently the Director of an environmental organization called Climate Resolve. And at that time, I was Chair at DWP at the Personnel Committee. And so, first of all, I want to acknowledge the great IBW workforce that's here today, and I want to speak in support of having an independent personnel department within LADWP. They need that authority to quickly hire and fire people at the utility. And many of the environmental goals are actually, though funded, are not being performed because there's not sufficient personnel, and this policy could remedy that. The second really important point is that the General Manager needs to be given authority on contracts up to $5 million. It will aid in the efficiency and running of the utility. And last, when it comes to board members, I ask that terms may be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Humpherville, hold Mr. Humpherville's time, followed by Mr. Holland, John Holland, and Elizabeth Hawley. Mr. Humpherville, floor is yours.
My name is Jack Humpherville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. I'd like to thank you, Herb. I'd like to thank Mr. Harris Dawson, Felipe, for starting this off. I'd also like to thank Andrew Westall for all the hard work he's done. The first draft, you deserve a compliment. You're a target, you're putting yourself out there, but it's a very good beginning. I love the idea of a plan. I mean, that's a super idea. But it needs work, whether it's five-year terms or figuring out what the labor deal's going to be. But first and foremost, in order to have an efficient department, we have to trust the people that are running the department. I happen to trust Marcy and her leadership gang, and I think that we need to abide by what she is asking us to do with regards to hiring, contracting, as well as the independence of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Holland.
Good afternoon. John Holland with the Central City Association. For the record, the Central City Association does not have a formal position on the specific reform proposals. We do support the effort to reform the department, however. We can agree that we now, what we have now can be improved, and the department can become more nimble. With the committee report coming out on Friday, we've not had a chance to discuss the specific ballot measure with our members, but we do support putting the measure on the ballot in November for the voters of Los Angeles to decide. The recommendations in the report do reflect, however, many of the positions that CCA has advocated in the past. Allowing the General Manager to be able to lead the department more effectively is a major step forward, and taking away some of the politics associated with rates is a positive development. We ask the council to put the measure on the November ballot. CCA looks forward to continuing to be involved in this process and discussing this position in the final measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hawley.
Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Hawley with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, or VICA, representing the San Fernando Valley business community. VICA welcomes its proposed reforms to LADWP's governance structure and applauds the time and effort put into these recommendations. We strongly support the increased authority of the General Manager to approve contracts, as we expect that this will make the procurement process more efficient and cost-effective. Festing more contracting authority in the restructured board and general manager is a positive step, which we urge you to support. VICA also urges further review of personnel rules, potentially allowing DWP to hire its own staff. This will improve the ability of the department to respond to changing needs and recruit staff quickly. DWP needs the flexibility to respond to a shifting workforce and changing operational requirements as they make much-needed infrastructure improvements. Regular strategic plans, tying the review to a sensible operational requirements of DWP, is a sensible step. We urge the council to review personnel rules and to support these recommendations today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. The time, we have already expired. We did our 10 minutes on both sides. And so I'd like to get the CAO, CLA, to come forward and have the other department folks stick around, because at this time, I'd like to engage the members of this council. Beginning with Mr. Englander. In fact, you know what? Miguel, this, I'd like for you to just, we heard a lot of talk about Section 9 and civil service. Can you again clarify for the people that are here and for this body what it actually does? Not what it could. What does it actually do?
Certainly. I think the CLA said it best at the last hearing, where she described it as permissive language. Currently, the DWP is like all other departments, that it's bound to Article 10 of the Charter related to civil service. And what this is, what's before you is to ask the question to the voters of Los Angeles, can there be a discussion on amendments, or modifications, or changes to Article 10 as it relates specifically to DWP employees through a collective bargaining process? And so, it doesn't require that there be amendments, it doesn't specify what those amendments are, it doesn't set a timeframe for any amendments to be considered. It allows your council to engage in discussion with labor on potential amendments to the civil service system. In addition to that, it allows your council to delegate in the future the salary-setting authority to the DWP board. It doesn't require that that occur. It gives you the ability to do so if at some later point, your council makes that decision. The process to do this would result in the same process that we engage in now when it comes to negotiations. We would receive, the DWP and my office will receive bargaining instructions from ERC. The DWP would receive it from its board. There would be a discussion of what changes or modifications management is seeking to make, and then those will be presented to labor for discussion and through collective bargaining. But of course, all of that is optional, it's not required under this language.
Thank you. Ms. Englander.
Thank you. I'm going to stand and rise first and thank Councilmembers Fuentes, Councilmembers Huizar and Harris Dawson, as well as our President, Herb, for what you've done and come up with today. I'm actually going to read from my DWP Reform Package book that I have here, some talking notes. And I'll tell you why I'm reading notes, because you know I usually don't out loud, but it's important. Today's plan is a result of more than a year of council meetings, various committee, public, and full council discussions, followed by numerous public meetings citywide. We're thankful for much of the thoughtful public input, well-informed from across the city, some traveled far to come to every meeting, and some provided fully drafted plans. CLA and the CAO drafted reports addressing all of the reform motions incorporating comments received during the public process, reports considered at joint rules, Energy and Environment Committees. We look forward now to following for what, in which, there is a broad consensus, including experts, and most importantly, the public. These were notes, not for me today. These were written, and Greg Smith read this in April 2010. The major objective of these reform packages, which is the book that I have here, this was Greg's book, many of these motions were voted on and approved on and had been studied and supported by then, who was here. I want to thank Councilmember Kokorian and Huizar specifically, who worked on these then as well, to develop and To develop and come up with an inspector general or ratepayer advocate, define the definition of surplus money, energy cost adjustment factor, or ECAF, regovernance of the board, and expanding positions in the role with defined expertise in restructuring the role and responsibilities of general manager and the oversight, the Office of Public Accountability and Integrity, and full access to all the information, documentation, and records. Those were the initiatives that were undertaken then. Here we are today. Here we are because the political will is here and continued to be here, and the driving force of those that were there now, then, and the ones that are here now to get this done. It's overdue, and it's ripe. And I think what you've done here to really open up the discussion was so needed to get the input. This is, yes, only a beginning. This is changing and turning a major paradigm in the way that we function, and it's like turning a ship. So it doesn't happen overnight, but it's happening now. And it's a first step. But I also think it comes from not having the resistance that we've had in the past from previous general managers as well. And that goes on to Marcy Edwards. And I want to thank her cooperative relationship, not with this body, but with the public. I told you, Marcy, when you, we sat down, and I remember the day you came into the office and said, you know, "I'm interviewing to be the general manager," and I said, "Why on earth would you want to do this? What are you thinking?" And you inherited a culture, a nightmare, antiquated systems, that many had inherited, and you took those on. We went through a lot of issues and problems just since you started here with the billing issue, for example. And what did you do about that? Well, what you did is you provided, we were, my district, the heart of that issue, where we had the most problems. And we had full-time DWP customer service representatives in our office every day to take on thousands, not hundreds, thousands of people that can make appointments to come in and get their bills resolved. The way you've dealt with things has been remarkable and responsive, but this is, and so this reform package, and the beginning of that, and working with my colleagues that have done a tremendous job, and our CLA and our CAO, who have really done a terrific job of making sure they listen to the public, and what we need to do is just the beginning. And I want to thank you for that, and your leadership and your partnership with the public specifically. There's a lot we need to do. And the end result that I see, particularly representing the district that has had major disaster from utilities not maintaining their infrastructure, we see what can happen. And not having the ability to make quick decisions or the authority where you have the responsibility and the liability is very complicated and difficult. I think this gets us on the path to solve some of those issues before they happen. So I want to thank you for that. Mr. President, I want to thank you as well, because you've been there, out there, pushing this and driving it. You've been out there listening. Listening, taking the feedback and the input, and making sure that those issues are addressed in this governance package, and this is so important. I want to thank Greg, because I think he was a visionary before his time on many things, whether it's dealing with utilities, infrastructure, waste, things that necessarily aren't that popular. And just a good man that has done great things, and so thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Englander. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. One of the reasons I signed on to this initiative along with you and our chair and leader on this issue, Mr. Fuentes, is because, like so many Angelenos, I believe in reform at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. It all boils down to electrons and molecules and electrical tape, right? But it's so much more than just that. These recommendations are based on 20 years, 20 years of reporting to this council and previous councils suggesting these types of reforms. They were not created in a vacuum. They were based on data and reporting and the, what I would call shortcomings of the present governance structure. I feel that, clearly there will be some fine tuning here, but that these set of recommendations really do strike the balance of independence and oversight. And so I want to also commend the Rules Committee for the work that you all did on this issue, and then all of the participation from the city and constituents across the city on this very, very robust public process. And lastly, I want to commend the men and women of the Department of Water and Power for your incredible work over the decades. I think all of us have been ill-served by lack of reform, and I am optimistic that moving into the future and putting this before the voters, this very well-thought-out package of real reform to the voters will yield great benefits in the not-so-distant future. I am also very happy to see in the list of recommendations recreation of parks and the facing, we're facing a real, I would call it a catastrophe in our water bills for our recreation and parks facilities. $5 million in the immediate and up to $20 million per year in just within a few years to keep our recreation and parks facilities adequately maintained. So I'm glad to hear a report back on the recommendations that I put in based on that as Chair of Recreation and Parks. It's really, really important. And then, what I would like to also request a report back, I'm very definitely in support of increasing the authority of the GM to spend up to $5 million without so much red tape. I also understand we're giving the board power to approve up to a certain amount, and it will not be subject to Charter Section 245, and I believe that's recommendation O. And I'm curious to know, what is the number that we're talking about, and why, what's that based on? And Ms. So, you mentioned that if the council doesn't retain its authority on 245 and asserting jurisdiction, that that will be determined after a ballot measure is approved. My question would be, determined by whom? And how would that play out? And I would like to very much see a report back when the recommendations and the ordinance comes back. So, Ms. So?
That would be determined by council. It would be established by ordinance, and so you would determine the limit.
Okay, so that'll come back?
Yes.
But once the ballot initiative is approved by voters, that would then come back?
Yes.
That's the correct instruction?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. That was really my only question. I just really want to commend everyone who had part of this, because I think we're getting there. And again, Mr. Fuentes, for your leadership, because we would not be having this conversation right now had you not put forward that motion when you did, very timely. So I commend you as well. Thank you so much.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm hoping to be able to support this reform effort, particularly given all the work that's been done by our council president and many others, whom I commend for all their efforts. But I do have some concerns. As written, I think it takes away too much oversight from the utility, from the city council and the mayor. And also, perhaps even more vitally important, it potentially takes away oversight over the civil service system. Civil service standards are put into place to prevent cronyism and discriminatory practices and corruption, and to create more transparency. And getting rid of them for DWP workers is not necessarily, in my opinion, in the city's best interest, and does not support equality and equity going forward. Now, this is permissive. It means we can get rid of the civil service system. I don't know why we would want to put in permissive language to allow that. On the other hand, I wouldn't say it's a perfect system, and as we negotiate the final wording of this, I would encourage us to move towards wording that reflects civil service reform and not civil service elimination. Also, at a time in history when climate change is rapidly overtaking us, and for example, and you can Google this if you don't believe me, there was a major flood on every continent at the same time yesterday. I believe we need more oversight of our utility in terms of its environmental activities rather than less. And it troubled me that at the South LA Rules Committee meeting, when Mr. Harris Dawson asked a representative of the chamber for an example of the city council overstepping its policy bounds and interfering with DWP operations, he replied that mandating a renewable energy portfolio standard was a problem. I think that's actually exactly what we need to be able to keep doing, rather than the opposite. We need to do more to address climate change rather than less. We need to do it faster rather than slower. Having said all that, as Personnel Chair, I'm very aware of the need to improve things so that DWP can much more quickly and effectively hire the people that they need to hire. We can also make it much easier and more functional in terms of procurement and contracts, and the suggestions in this legislation, I think, are right on the nose in terms of that. I think it's important that we have a strategic planning document every four years. The wording isn't entirely clear that our efforts on environmental protection are part of that. So even though I've heard it mentioned that that's our intention, that should be written clearly into the document. Clearly, we need to find ways to strengthen our customer service, strengthen our ability to communicate to our ratepayers exactly what our rate increases are based on, and to support spending more money on infrastructure. I think we need to do all the good things that are in this proposal. At the same time, I think we need to try and limit it to the good pieces and the one or two that I think still need to be strengthened. I hope we can do that as we move forward with negotiations.
Mr. Huizar?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank everyone who is involved in moving this forward. This is tremendous amount of work, time, and effort has been put forth. And since the day that Mr. Fuentes put forward the motion, our council president and chair of the committee went out throughout the city to have public hearings, to hear from the public as to what they think about the direction we are going as a city. And what we have before us are some needed reforms that have been talked about quite a bit in council and other parts of the city. But finally, we have before us a comprehensive package for us to move forward. Everything from the contracting procedures that are similar to when I got on the school board back in 2001, we wanted to improve the business operations of the school district. And some may think that that is just a bureaucratic maneuvering, but at the end of the day, it allows the entity to better service and achieve its goals and purposes if we have a smoother operating entity. So I think that those changes are much needed, going to allow our general manager and the board to do its job while the council plays a better role in setting the policies and objectives of the direction we want to go in. I'm very interested in seeing the DWP as this council is, to ensure that we move to cleaner energy, renewables. And so as we move forward and present a plan, if this should pass, if the voters approve, that every four years, we would have an opportunity to set the policies and objectives, and we ensure that the DWP is expending its money in that direction as well. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm pretty excited about those parts of this proposal. However, I still am concerned about the civil service component of this. As I heard the issues raised, as I sat and discussed with others, the civil service component and the solution we found, I thought that we would best be served if we sir, move forward with what we have in here, which is recommendation 9 and 10, which is in conjunction with item P. 9 and 10 is moving us to a direction that will give us better data and information as to whether we want to waive all civil service requirements in the future. I am concerned about, I believe that would, from what I've heard, these are, we could have fixes within the Personnel Department that would get us the problems that were raised. For example, the Personnel Department has a dedicated staff to our Police Department that provides a unique service to our city, and they in turn process LAPD's personnel and their unique needs. Here, we are saying that DWP may have unique needs, and so therefore, they may require also to have dedicated staff and to fix some of those items we have identified, such as long waiting lists for jobs that have opened up, and whether we can give out tests in a timely manner. So my reservations remain on that, but I think overall, this is a very good package, and that we should move forward to adopt this, because it's much needed, and the overall picture is a good one to move forward. And as Ms. Corretts stated, I look forward to the continued discussion on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Thank you, members. That concludes the council's conversation at this time, where it relates to this action. So, Madam Clerk, why don't you inform us as to what is before this body?
Amending motions 16A, B, C, and D have been circulated for council's consideration.
Okay. Mr. Englander?
The, just a question, the one on Kokorian's motion, not sure which one it was, for the billing to be monthly?
16A.
First of all, I want to thank you for that. The fact that we bill every other month, the only word, and I don't think I would use it often publicly on a microphone, that the only, the only thing that, issue I have, I think billing every other month is stupid. It's just ridiculous. I don't know any other bill that you get only every two months, and it's just ridiculous. So I thank you so much for doing that. And what's the likelihood we'd actually implement that pretty quickly?
So, the charter language would actually require the department to implement by 2020. So...
Not soon enough, but, okay. Bye. Thank you for doing that. Let's support it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kokorian, and I too thank you for doing that. That speeds the process up. I think we wanted January, you did it sooner, so thank you.
Well, just for clarification, there was a recommendation already to go to monthly billing in the recommendations, which is, I think, an important step forward in having people understand how much they're actually paying for water and power as well. The billing cycle now gives an overstated view of what people are actually paying. But what motion 16A further does is provides that the DWP must provide daily water billing information to sanitation, so that people's sanitation bills will also reflect their declining water use. So as people are working hard to use less water, they're still paying a sanitation bill based on last year's water usage. So this creates a further incentive for water conservation and rewards those property owners that are doing what they should be doing in reducing water use.
Okay. So let's again restate the item.
Mr. President? So...
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I apologize. The ratepayer advocate indicated to us that the date is July 1 of 2020, so just wanted to make that clarification. And then on, no, later than, July 1 of 2020. And then with regard to motion 16C, it's our understanding that under item number 2, this relates to the removal of the board members, that it should be consistent, to be consistent with the police commissioner, that we need to include some timeframes. And so we would suggest that we include those timeframes as part of this action. The current police commissioner removal timeframes are, if the mayor chooses to remove a police commissioner, the commissioner can, within 10 days, request a council action to reinstate, and the council has 10 council meeting days.
All right. All right, so let's begin the voting process. We'll start again with the clerk.
The item can be voted on as one item, as amended by the motions 16A, B, C, as amended to include the timeframe, and 16D.
Okay, so with that said, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. It's my understanding we already took care of a public comment. I see him, I see him, but I'm asking a question. We did take care of general public comment?
Correct. General public comment.
Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to reconsider item 1A, and then continue it for two weeks.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration, 1A. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
And that item will be continued until June 21st? Any other announcements? If everyone could please rise, if everyone in the council chambers could please rise for... For, what I'd like to ask of the members? And I thought we had mentioned it to everyone. I would like to today adjourn only once, for one individual. Now, if there are concerns, I get that. But we have someone that helped change the course of this nation. And from time to time, we do this. But Mr. Englander, I see that you have an adjourned motion. Why don't we go ahead and do that? Because I don't know if you'll be here or what have you. So let's go on, and we'll just do our normal.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually a dear friend of mine. And I asked that we adjourn. I actually often don't adjourn in sadness, but this one, I asked that we do. In memory of David Levesque. He passed away on Saturday, May 28th. He was born May 3, 1950, in Canada. And had six siblings, George, Valerie, Edward, Lorraine, Robert, and Thomas. Tended Canoga Park High School and Valley State College. An excellent athlete, excelled in baseball, where he was a member of the Valley State's 1970 National Championship Baseball Team. Dave valued faith, family, friendship, and baseball. He was a natural teacher and mentor, and he was a man with a big heart. Set the highest standard of a good husband, father, friend, and truly a community leader. He was known for his work ethic and often cited for saying, "Good things happen to those who work hard." He not only worked hard to build a successful insurance business, but also worked hard on behalf of our community. Reporting service requests every day, volunteering alongside of his wife, Becky. And Dave is survived by Becky and their children, Christopher, Timothy, Michael, their grand, a grandfather seven times over with Andrew, Matthew, Peter, James, Darian, Mary, and Emmy. Dave and Becky are one of the most incredible people. And I say both of them as incredible people, because together they were really one giant person in the community. Everything they touched, they were so passionate. We worked for many years together, in fact, building schools, doing so many different major projects, taking on, before I was here, City Hall. And just trying to get things done for the community. And Dave was always there with a big heart, a big smile, very positive. Becky is always the emotional one. She cried at the happiest of times. And I can't imagine what she's going through now. It's hard when you lose somebody that is so well-respected, and so well-loved, and so honest, and so ethical, and so outgoing, and such a pillar of a community member, and such a fine example of a human being and humanity. My heart goes out to the family and services her this past weekend. May he rest in peace, and thank you for allowing me to do that today.
Our prayers are with you, Mr. Englander, and with the family. You know, members, we also rise today to acknowledge the great life of one of the most phenomenal individuals to walk this earth. You know, what a lot of people, or let me restate it. A lot of minorities and a lot of African-Americans, we realize the importance that sports figures have played where it relates to our civil rights and being treated equally, and showing the world that we were just as good, just as smart, just as able as anyone. And I can't think of anyone who's ever walked this earth that did it better than Muhammad Ali. He's... Muhammad Ali was a force of nature. And all of us have, I would think, some memory. But I can remember as an 11- or 12-year-old boy, sitting in the barber shop, looking at a sports section from the then Cleveland Press, which was a newspaper. It is not in existence anymore. They had this photograph, or this drawing of this big hulking figure, kind of looked like a bear, and this guy was named Sonny Liston. And then they had a guy that kind of looked like a rabbit, and he was on a, what do you call it, unicycle going backwards. And that was my first introduction to who this person was. And I remember in our community with Muhammad Ali, he wasn't automatically loved. It was 50/50 in the beginning. But when he won that fight, and he would stand before the world, tall, good-looking, articulate, and black, it helped change the life of so many African-Americans in this country. It helped with a sense of pride. And on top of that, that he did it with such class. Float like a butterfly, sting like a bee. What is your hands can't hit, which eyes can't see? I'm so fast, I can turn out the lights and be in the bed under the cover before it gets dark. I mean, who would be so bold? I'm so pretty. Who would be so bold to not only say those things, but to back them up? And when this man stood in front of the federal, the United States of America, and said, "For religious purposes, I cannot..." I think that it really, that really shocked the world. Many of us said, "Oh, go on, because he was such a sight to see." "Oh, go on, you'll be doing exhibition bouts, and you'll never actually fight in a war." But it wasn't about being the champ and whooping everybody. It was about making a statement. It was about standing tall. And it changed a lot of lives, not only in this country, in this world. I can remember when, there was a time when he was the most recognized figure on the planet of the earth. The most recognized figure on the planet of the earth. He got, women really got involved in boxing because of him. I can remember when he lost the one time the championship. He was fighting Joe Frazier. And I was in college, and my mother called in tears. I'm like, "I'm sad," but you're like crying. He was, without a doubt, the greatest of all time. And just to share, just to have lived during his championship would have been enough for me. But to come to Los Angeles and actually go to an event and to see Muhammad Ali performing magic tricks, making napkins disappear, to meet him, to have photographs with him, to literally talk with him, he loved the crowd. To attend, representing the state of California, the Kentucky Derby. And there's a part of the Kentucky Derby where they bring the horses out before the race so that you can look at them. Muhammad Ali walks towards that area. The crowd began to chant. They had to take their horses and put them back in, because the crowd was so loud. He was a very special man. And I really thank my former boss, Yvonne Burke, and her husband for affording me the opportunity to meet him and for him to literally know who I was, and whenever I saw him, acknowledge me. So we say goodbye to a legend. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. You were so eloquent in your description of Muhammad Ali. I'm in the generation that came along after his fighting days were gone and knew about him mostly in books and watching old videos. And the lesson that we take from the life of Muhammad Ali is to remember the long game. It is very interesting now to hear the world over praise and give adulation to Muhammad Ali. But when you read history, you know, there are people ready to throw him in jail. People who literally banned him from the sport of boxing, to the point where he made a sport of having fights across the world and in the third world, because there wasn't a welcome mat here in the United States. And so I think the lesson we can all take is, in the moment, something may be difficult. We may draw a lot of ire. But when we have the courage of our convictions, history can and often will absolve us in the way that it has Muhammad Ali. And so I thank him for that example. And again, eternal truth, that standing on your principles will, in the end, leave you in a good place. And it helps a lot when you can knock people out, too.
Mr., there was a name, Mr. Sadio?
You know, my dad was a boxer, so obviously, I grew up in a household with a speed bag and a heavy bag and the rhythm of all that. So obviously, Muhammad Ali was a person that had a lot of meaning in our household. We paid attention to him. But more so than that was the politics. A man who had the strength of his convictions, a man, a Muslim. And boy, did we miss him today. His voice would be clear, would be a clarion, call on those who attempt to vilify Muslims and so many other people today. He would be a clear voice, as he was during his time period, outspoken against the war and paid the price of his convictions. And so he was a boxer, of course. But then I recall, when we got older, became a discussion and a debate about the politics and his courage to take the stands that he took and pay the price. At the peak of his career, at the height, when he could have been making millions and millions of dollars, he took a stand for which he paid the price. And we should never forget that. He was a man of peace. A man who could knock you out, as was just said, but he was a man of peace and a man of justice. And he was, as they say in quotes, "Without dispute, the greatest of all time."
Thank you for that, Mr. Sadio. A guy who started out controversial and wound up being loved by everyone around the world. So we, with pride, stand to adjourn in his memory. With that said, members, this Council meeting is adjourned.